I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Senator Jones, do you have any changes to the agenda?
Yes, Madam, I would like to take item 13B and put it in front of item number five. I'd also like to remind the council that we have our attorney on the line. He's going to be very hard to hear him, so if everyone could please stay as quiet as we can so she can hear everything, and then if she needs to respond to something, I'll put my mic down so that it's on.
Thank you. Do you have any court, do you have any action for the session?
Close session will follow the opening meeting, so no action.
Thank you. Our thought of the day today is Chief Kevin Jones, interim city administrator.
So I'd like to take a moment of silence for about 10 seconds and recognize not only all of our safety workers who are just around the country fighting rioters and violence, but also the members from Lassen High School's office and the police department who are down in Oakland working shifts at that man. Thank you.
Okay, today we have two proclamations. We are going to recognize Lassen High School valedictorians, there are two of them. After that, we are going to give a presentation of the key to the city to the Lassen High School class of 2020. I'm going to read the proclamation for our valedictorians, and then I will ask them to meet me near the microphone. We're going to stay in spirit of social distancing, I don't want to upset their parents. So I will stand on one side, myself and Mayor Pro Tim Bryan-Moore, our Lassen High alumni, so we will both come up and join you after I read this. Whereas each year, Lassen High School selects one student, usually, this year too, with the highest grade point average to be valedictorian. The student with the second highest is salutatorian, however, not this year. The coursework completed is difficult, and the completion for such an honor is highly competitive. And these students serve as role models for their classmates and underclassmen through exemplifying critical thinking, effective communication, problem-solving, and organizational skills. And in addition to achieving the highest class ranks, these students have demonstrated many admirable qualities, such as integrity, hard work, determination, and a commitment to excellence throughout their four years in high school. These students are honored at their high school graduation ceremony, but because the achievement is so significant and worthy of praise, the Susanville City Council wishes to recognize them as well. And this year, two Lassen High School students have achieved the same grade point average and have each been selected to earn the honor of valedictorian. Caitlin Locke-Ische and Gabriella Nelson are Lassen High School class of 2020 valedictorians. Now therefore, via proclaim, the City of Susanville commends these students' names valedictorian 2020 on their impressive accomplishments, passed by the municipal city council on this third day of June 2020. So could I have Caitlin and Gabriella meet us at the podium? So Gabby had to work. I'll get that back. So Caitlin, where are you going to go to college?
I'm sending her going to City College in Napa.
Wow, nice. And what's your major?
Biochemistry.
Biochemistry. Okay, well, good for you. So Caitlin, we've got our honor as alumni to recognize you as valedictorian, Lassen High School class of 2020. There you go. Thank you. Okay, moving on to the class of 2020. Because of the COVID-19 pandemic, members of the senior class of 2020 are faced with having a very unique graduation experience. And in addition to big events like graduation, they are missing out on traditions they have seen older classmates and siblings take part in, which they will not get the experience to do. The staff and faculty of Lassen High School, like other schools across the nation, have developed a creative and coordinated response plan to lessen the impact on students who feel that something is being taken away from them. And this year, there are 165 seniors that will be graduating from Lassen Union High School, many of whom will be starting careers, going on to colleges, playing in sports, joining the military are something that they are passionate about. And on June 5th, 2020, at 6:00 p.m., these graduates will be graduating from Lassen Union High School, beginning with a procession of vehicles from Riverside Drive and eventually receiving their diploma and a presentation after they exit their vehicles. And the City of Susanville commends the members of the Lassen Union, more to trustees, the Lassen Union High School staff and faculty and partners for their special considerations to make this day for this graduating class. I, Wendy Schuster, Mayor of the City of Susanville, and on behalf of the city council and all our citizens, in honor of the Lassen Union High School class of 2020, do hereby proclaim, June 5th, 2020, as we are last day in Susanville, California. And I present the Lassen Union High School class of 2020, the Golden Key Char City. I have set my hand and cause the silver city of Susanville to be a fifth on the fifth day of June 2020. I also have Landon Bennett, senior class president, and whoever came with him. So this is Landon Bennett. This is Landon Bennett. He is the senior class president for Lassen High School. He is also CSF president, which means California Scholarship. Federation of the La-? Oh, thank you. Federation.
Jay Lee is also the co-president, that's CSF president.
And who, okay, this is, hold on, this is Shelly Bennett, senior class advisor. Come on in.
Landon is the class president. He's also the president of CSF and the sentinel of the FBLA club. Jay Lee is the vice president of the class and the co-president of CSF along with Landon. What position is he? Vice president of the FBLA club. These kids are all athletes, performers, they're involved in everything. We're really seeing the cream of the crop up here along with Caitlin. Alain German is, what are you, an FFA? I'm sorry. President of the FFA and secretary of the class of 2020. And Keegan Kirak, our treasurer of the class of 2020, and also just an all-around great kid. These guys have always been there. Yeah, football stud, and been there for, since they were freshmen, helping me out with, you know, making their quotes and getting things ready for Winterfest and all of that. So I'm very proud of them.
Before I take this off, could I have City of Susanville employees who are also Lassen High alumni, please stand? Also, in order to support our future fellow alumni, would anybody in the building who is Lassen High School alumni please stand?
On the behalf of the class 2020, I would like to thank the council and Mayor Jimison, the key to the city this week.
It's like, Landon is also the grand center of our community, former mayor of Susanville.
Madam, I did have one recommendation, two presentations. It is a great time for it, but I also got Captain Cox to come up. He's going to hit my door with a couple of our officers.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We just want to take a quick moment and formally introduce our two new staffs who have joined us. They've all graduated, call this excuse please, standing. They started with us back on April 5th. They have both recently did their training program on their own serving privilege. Also, Casey McHron moved here from Redding, moved his family up here and now calling us home. And this is Officer Nina Jean, who moved up here from Sacramento and also called us students from Atlanta. I just want to formally introduce them and say hi.
Okay, moving on to item 13B. That is the golf course, and that will be presented by Chief Kevin Jones, interim city administrator.
Madam, I remember the council. So first, as you can see, this garnered a little bit of attention. At the May 27 meetings, when the council approved the amendment of the rates, there was, obviously, that was our budget workshop, and there's thoughts on how we're going to try and solve some of our budget woes. And one of the comments that was made was the consideration, and it wasn't consideration of this, the agenda item should have been probably worded differently, but, you know, the possibility of doing something with the golf course. I want to start by saying that I understand there was an ad hoc committee. I collected a handful of people, I'm not going to call it a committee, but concerned people. One person was not invited, she reminded me of that when she walked in, Sophie. And she definitely won't be the next time. But it was more so just to talk about, you know, I think there was too much focus, you know, and some poor wording on my part, of, you know, reducing the nine holes. I think the emphasis here is trying to figure out how the city subsidizes the golf course less, for example, this year being $84,000. That number of your tax seven?
As of today, it's 66.
66,000 dollars, thank you. So I want to pass on that I met with these folks. We had a very good meeting because it wasn't just talking about, you know, we weren't talking about all the problems, we were talking about the solutions. And I believe we came to some really good ideas that we're going to meet again on Monday, and the focus is to save money. And I know there's, people are going to want to talk in this regard, but the focus is to try and increase our revenue and put out less from the city side. And we all know we're in a very unique and never-seen-before year, so we're going to take some of that, but there were incredible, there were great ideas, but they also brought up things that could be unnecessary costs, and we're going to work on those. One, there was about three or four recommendations that came out of that that I want to bring forward to the council is, obviously, I don't think, and I want to make it clear for everyone, I don't, the intent was not to pull the trigger on killing nine holes, and that was never the intent by the council or council person. It was more of, how do we save our golf course? Because at the end of the day, it's costing the city money. So, working with these folks, I think that we can make some great strides in reducing the cost without going to an 18, without going to a nine hole, at least off the interim, because I think that, I know there's been different things tried in the past, and I guess what I'm getting to is, let me work with these people and try and come up with some solutions, and I think that we will have some very needed. One of the things that I will get out starting Monday is start talking about the availability of tournaments. Now, they will be a challenge because we still are in social distancing, but I believe there's a way we can do it and still benefit the community and still be safe in what we're doing. Okay, so that's one of them. Of course, you know, if we can put 80 people in a tournament, or however many are in the tournaments, that's bringing us money, okay? The first great step would be integrated rates, and I know we've sold memberships, annual memberships prior to that. One of the others is to, as I explained to our folks today, was that the city administrator, interim or full-time, does not have the authority to change the rates because the council sets that. On June 17, I'm going to bring a proposal to the council to allow, to give the city administrator the authority to change the rates before you, man, but change the rates for certain things, whether we're doing a promotional event, maybe it's a special weekend or something, but have the ability to try and market. And we all know that, you know, there's a lot of employees and the city administrator has the authority over the golf course, but if the council will grant me that at the next meeting, then I think I can work with our stakeholders out there in marketing it a little better. And when I say "I," you know, this is a two-way street. One of the things that we talked about was the partnerships, and I believe in the partnerships of not only the people who were at that meeting, but the people who were going to involve. So I think that we can do that and do our best to cut down any subsidization from the city, not any, but some, obviously. And we have to get people up to the golf course. Part of that would be working, moving forward on trying to figure out what the city wants to do as a whole as golf course owner. Does the city want to continue being a golf course owner? If not, then let's try and move towards the separation of the possibility of leases and sales and things like that, and of course, that comes from the council. The biggest thing on the menu, pardon the bum, is the restaurant, the bar. So one of the things we need to do sooner than later is try and get an independent person in that restaurant. I understand it's been tried before. I understand that it, there was times where it was successful, but there were times where it was not. So, you know, let me work with this group, let me work with trying to do some few things, and there is, we can get, when I say be, an independent person that is not an employee of the city, can get a liquor license. There are some restrictions, and it depends on, you know, you have a beer line, you have a full alcohol sale, and it depends on our population. If there's one out there, the beer and wine is easier than the others. That's typically a lengthy process, probably not six months, but it's definitely a few months. However, the daily special permit will still be up to grabs for the one-time events, okay, once we start the tournaments. Again, in the same respect, you know, we're in the stage where we still have to observe all of the rules that a typical restaurant does, things like that. That's not something that's going to occur overnight, it's not going to occur next week either. I mean, that's, you know, at best, a month process, but to try and get that moving. But, you know, one of the first steps is really try and get the tournaments going. Let's get them reserved, let's see how it goes, and, you know, there'll be, definitely be some stipulations. We're not going to be able to do big social gathering like this, so. So, so anyways, that's my recommendation. I know a lot of people are going to want to talk, but I want people to know that this meeting was not to kill nine holes on the course. This meeting was to talk about ways that the city could cut down on subsidization of the golf course. And we have, this year, obviously, everyone's in the same boat. We didn't open up until, I believe, May 12. We did amend the rates. We have seen some annual memberships come in, just talking to finance manager earlier. I don't know the exact numbers, but I'm hoping that they will increase, but whether it's the men's club, whether it's tournaments, there's talk about doing maybe another dive to men's club. That's the goal here. The goal here is not to eliminate the nine holes, okay? And I think that, that would be my recommendation, at least to move forward to see how we can increase our revenue and cut down any subsidization, so. So having said that, I will now turn it over to the council for discussion.
Okay, so, thank you. I was part of that ad hoc committee in the beginning as well, I know you didn't know that, I was done in five years here. But I will tell you this, if I had a four-bedroom house that I buy myself or lease someday, I would not even talk about putting it down to a two-bedroom house. And I, I, as your mayor, am asking that we don't even consider this again. We do whatever we can to get it to where, like you said, subsidize less. I don't like that. Cancel?
Madam Mayor, may I say something? Is my mic working?
I don't know.
It's not working.
Do you want mine?
All right, well, there you go. Right, so my thoughts are, you know, I know I brought this to you last week, Kevin, and we were eating, you know, $84,000 of your tax dollars. So originally, there's somebody in this room that literally came to me and said, Thomas, run for city council because our tax dollars are being, you know, thrown away and we need to fix this, right? And so I came in and, you know, I said, you know, I'm going to run for office. And a lot of you said, you know, we don't want firefighters or police officers to lose their jobs, we want our city to run efficiently. So in doing that, you know, we bring in about $180 million a year, but we only get to keep $1.8 million to run our entire city. In retrospect, with COVID, we're probably, you know, I don't want to say a certain number, but we're looking at about 1.5, 1.45, and so that's going to affect jobs. So in that, I was saying, you know, hey, we're losing $84,000 a year on this golf course, and I don't, I love golf, you know, I don't want to lose the golf course. However, this does fall to the residents. If you guys want this golf course to work, we need your help. We need people to golf, we need to, on the honor system, you know, I know a lot of people have, I don't see anyone sitting in this room that did that, but there were people that would say, hey, you know, we golf all free on, you know, during the winter, and we golf for free on the honor system, and, you know, screw the government. Well, that's screwing you guys because it's your golf course. And so if you want, you guys got to fight back, you've got to go golfing, take your kids out, you know, really show them what the golf course is about, and that's what it comes down to. I can only do so much as your representative, she can only do so much, but it comes down to us taking back Susanville. And, you know, that's why Quincy started the liquor cleanup, that's why we started these things, is because we care just as much as you. And so I know that a lot of you come here passionate and say, hey, we don't want to lose our golf course. I agree with you. However, you also voted, you also wanted me to run for office to save the city. So in retrospect to that, I would say the restaurant has to get working again, and this time, the last three people that ran that restaurant were friends of somebody that never ran a restaurant. We need somebody who's going to apply that has restaurant experience and is actually going to run the fishery. We need the liquor license back so that you guys can, you know, have six Coronas and, you know, golf. We need people that are actually going to be making fundraisers to get the golf course going. And last but not least, Mayor Schuster and I spoke about getting a wedding venue out there. You know, we can really make this golf course work. What we need from you guys is we need to band together and make this work together. And so I'm not shooting down that golf course at all, however, I'm saving $84,000, now 66, $1,000 of your tax dollars are being spent in the hole every single year, but that's a top job, that's a firework job. And after paradise, I don't want to see anything happen, not in my city. So what I'm going to say to you is if we want the golf course to work, let's band together, make it work, make it.
Counsel, anybody else? No? Okay. So I have some people who filled out forms. I had first, one I received was Sherri Lindsay regarding golf, right?
Yes.
Okay.
So I was out there writing up my husband the other day, no bathrooms except for in the main clubhouse. Can, is there, can we get that fixed? Can we get those going again?
So that was something that came up today, and the answer is yes, but we'll have to do it in accordance with making sure we have hand sanitizing stations, things like that. But I, yeah, that came up today, so there's a lot of, yes.
So there's no water out there, not washing, just the water?
Well, we'll have to provide hand sanitizing stations attached to the Florida.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alyssa Phillips-Norton, what's it, regarding the golf course? Okay. Thank you.
Hi, Alyssa Phillips-Norton. Good afternoon, council members. I don't know what the total budget shortfall is at the City of Susanville, how can I wasn't able to attend the main meeting? So what is your total shortfall retirement?
I refer to Ms. Savage on that, if you want to rest everyone quick. It's not, not on our agenda, but I think you can at least say what the anticipated deficit is for 2021.
$800,000.
So I was going to speak about the potential of closing the nine holes, because I believe it needs to remain as an 18-hole golf course. You can reduce your cost by cutting out the nine holes, but I'm not sure what the effect is going to be on your revenue, and I don't know whether you analyze that. People who prefer 18 holes will head over to Bailey Creek or Almanor. So your revenue may drop as well when you close your, the first nine holes of your golf course, and I was going to lobby against that, or at least do the analysis for it. And because you have an $800,000 deficit, and I'm sorry I again couldn't attend that main meeting, but I don't know if the council and city administrator have looked at other options for reducing your costs. Things like asking the employees, I think you mentioned that, I looked at the video of the May 28 meeting, part of it, and I noticed, I think it was Hugh, also Mayor Schuster, that recommended that employees could take on and pay for their own health insurance and for their own purse costs, which would reduce the city.
You believe that that was our finance manager?
Okay, okay, thank you. Things like institute a one-day-a-month furlough for management employees and then institute the same for your non-management employees and negotiate with the party. But that would save you approximately 5% just to have a one-day-a-month furlough, a temporary one for the next three months, so you see how the situation is with your budget, take six months into your first tenure. I would look at, I don't know, we've already considered encouraging folks to pay voluntary early retirement and giving them some incentive in order to do that, that would save on some employee costs in the year until you're in a better financial situation to fill those jobs. I would consider not filling jobs that are absolutely essential for six months or so until you're in a better financial position.
Ms. Norton, I'm sorry to interrupt you. We're talking specifically about the golf course. We have not got the public comment, but if you want to just talk in public comment in general, then you can. So I apologize for interrupting you, but it's specific to the golf course.
Well, the thing is, I don't know financially what the history is of the golf course breaking even. So rather than target one particular facility or one particular program, what I'm suggesting is that you look at all of the programs within the city and see if there's some other means for you to save money. So if you do have to subsidize the golf course, you have savings over here to help out of that golf course situation, and maybe someday it will break even or even that one. Okay, thank you.
I have Mr. Ron Darrow.
Mayor, council members, thank you for this opportunity to speak. As you said, my name is Ron Darrow. Regarding the golf course, a couple of points I would like to make is 80. eighty. This year, we came real close last year. The general fund contribution was only like fourteen thousand dollars last year, and we're working hard at it. This year is obviously different because of the virus, and there was no revenue collected for several months, or at least except for those that were on this for the honor system and maybe paid ten bucks. And then there's a relatively large contingency here today, all in favor of keeping it an eighteen-hole golf course. That's the ultimate golfing experience. We met with Chief Jones, Administrator Jones, slash, better put a slash in there now, someone that I've worked with in law enforcement for many years this morning. And I know that there's a committed group of people, this contingency out here also believes that the golf course should break even. And we do see that there are some ways that we can save money, even if it entails volunteering until it gets its feet on the ground. Some of the council members are aware of that, that I'm willing to volunteer and have in the past large numbers of hours committed to the golf course so that we can have that asset remain within the community. And I do consider it to be an asset. All we ask, and I keep my comments brief, if you're willing to go with the administrators' recommendations and give us that opportunity to continue to do that. And I think that, I'm not sure that we can clear up the full eighty this year because of the COVID-19 problem, but I assure you that we could have a golf course break even in the next golfing season, provided we don't have a continued virus problem jumping out there and presenting a problem. We can do this. We're committed to doing it. We just want an eighteen-hole golf course. Some of the people here are property owners that are also concerned about the value of their property on the adjacent front nine. And I think that's a legitimate concern. I happen to be one of those people, but I won't mention that as a disclaimer. There are issues. We can correct them if given the opportunity and if everybody understands that you're serious, we're serious, and you're willing to listen to solid recommendations and give us the opportunity to volunteer some time out there and make it work. Give us that chance, and that's all we will ask for. Thank you.
Do the golfers know who to talk to, who would then take or bring information to the administrator? Are they aware?
The committee, the folks that we spoke to today, it was clear that if they have a concern, they should reach out to me directly.
Oh, got it, okay.
And the representatives that were brought out of gathering today, as well as some others that are gonna be joining us next Monday, are a good representative group. I assure you, my ear gets bent, and I assure you that I also know where to go with comments if I feel they're appropriate tickets to the city. So I think, there are a lot of offers to make. They just play off.
Right.
Take the money and play off.
So all of them know that we do wanna hear from them? I guess they'll know now, right?
Well, those that will talk to me, I will make sure that you get to hear from them by way of me and no other way. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, first name is Jim, and I'm sorry, I cannot read this last name.
It's Tom Renaga.
No, it's not. Jim Renaga, did you pull that out?
I did.
Oh, Jim Renaga.
I'll keep it brief. My name's Jim Renaga. Thanks for the opportunity to talk. I've been a golf coach at high school for twenty years, girls and boys golf. I'm very supportive of the golf course. I'm very supportive of junior golf. However, there's been no junior golf parents or anything for five years. It's just that an issue with whoever's been managing the course. So we need to do that. That's one thing we really need to do to promote golf. Get the kids out there so their parents don't. That's really the only thing I have to add to what Mr. Jones said and what Mr. Darrow said. Let's look at the glass like it's half-full and not half-full. Because if we get rid of that nine, you're gonna lose the whole course. It's over. So let's keep the whole eighteen, and let's do whatever we have to do to generate revenue. Let's break even. That's my.
Okay, is there a way to, sorry, oh, there's.
Thank you for allowing me to come and speak on behalf of the women's golf club. I'm not gonna be negative because I think what I've seen is some positive actions by the city administrator and the board. One of the things I do wanna say is that I wanna thank you for your recent resolution on reducing the fees for member, what is it, full-time membership. And I just wanna tell you that I am not going to take the refund because I think it's important that I give back. And I know it's not that much, but it's enough to help. And if everybody else did, we might get a couple sprinklers mixed. I don't know. But I did want to bring up in that resolution where you said, whereas the Diamond Mountain Golf Course is an asset to the community, providing those within the community who enjoy golf or who are considering taking up golf, a venue to participate locally. And where is the thing here? That you basically recognize that the golf course is an asset to the community. And that in this resolution tells me that you care about this golf course and that we have to work together. And I wanted to bring that up because it's here. It's on record. And so therefore, I'm challenging you, as well as all of us, to work together to make it the asset that it can be. Thank you.
Any other members of the public who'd like to speak? Yes.
I'll give up a little bit by eighth by saying I played my first round out there in nineteen sixty-seven, the year that it was kinda just keeping going. I played with Charlie Emerson, and I've been there ever since. I am an annual member, and I kinda agree with Sophie. I thought this would maybe send out a letter to the people that you're thinking about giving a refund to and see how they feel about getting the refund. You may find that there's more of Sophie and I that would leave it there. Because I did play in January, February, and March, and I feel like I've done my round then. The course right now is probably as pretty as it's ever been. We're getting a lot of volunteer work going on out there, as well as the state employees. They're doing a fantastic job right now. But I personally would like to invite you people to come out and see the golf course, talk to some of the people. I'm out there every morning for the most part, and there are many other ones. Come out and drive around, take a look at the golf course, talk to some of the golfers, talk to some of the people, and you may have some ideas yourself on how we can make this work. But like everybody else has said, if we don't do it together, it ain't gonna work. So we do need to get together. And I thank you for your here.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Oh, wait, the mayor, council members, first of all, thank you for what you did for your time. It's an effort. I appreciate that. Here's my first question. How do we make Susanville great again? Susanville is not really real good. We all know that. And it's not because of just what's happened over the last few months. You've been going downhill for a while. How do we make people wanna come to Susanville? There's gotta be things that people will wanna do in Susanville for them to be here. We've got the Vis Johnson Trail, we've got the airport, we've got all these amenities. The golf course is an amenity. They will cause people to wanna be here. And if we lose that amenity, that's one recent moral reason that the person they say, "I don't wanna go to Susanville." Okay, so keep that in mind. The one thing that I've noticed recently, as most you know, I'm a real estate broker, our values, housing values at the golf course have really increased lately. And, you know, I think it's because of the golf course. Years ago, you wouldn't find hardly anybody that actually lived out there that played golf. But now, here's a show of hands, who lives out there and plays golf? It's a lot more people than we ever see in the past. So that means those properties out there are more attractive, which means the prices goes up, which what happens after that? Property taxes. So we generate income from that. We talk about how, and what it needs to be done, this needs to be done as a business, as a very, very good business. And what we've had in the past is really a mishap of how it's been run. You know, a previous city administrator, not the most recent, but the recent prior, he didn't really like the golf course. He didn't really do a lot to try to make the golf course successful. So you have a situation where there's not money being spent for maintenance, and things of that nature. The golf course doesn't look as good as it potentially could. So that causes the play to go down. I'm gonna play Bailey great because it's in really great shape instead of Susanville. So it's gotta be run as a business. Jim Renaga talked about the youth program. We just hired a brand-new golf course manager. He's a gentleman that has years and years of golf course experience. If you give him a chance to try to run the golf course as a business and try to make money on it, I think that's gonna happen. And it's all because of how the golf course is taken care of. It's potentially, we have a restaurant, and, you know, things of that nature. So we just, you know, we just have to give it a chance. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Okay, seeing none, we are going to move on. Oh, Quincy Hesse.
Can you hear me? You can. Okay, thank you. This is really cool. The golf course is something we've talked about. It's something that has to do with money and has something with recreation. I think people like it. First of all, the best thing about even putting the item on here is that all of you came out here. And I think hearing from everybody, listening to everybody, and most importantly, seeing that there's a roomful of people, and I believe this goes beyond this room, that actually wanna work together to make something happen. When you don't have that level of communication, all of a sudden you see a problem. And sometimes the first reaction is to solve that problem by cutting costs. We know we're losing money. Let's figure out where we're losing money and cut those things. But it takes the community like yourselves, which is why this is so, so important to come back and remind us to try harder to work together. And I think if one thing comes out of this is that we're all gonna work together to make it happen. So whatever that takes, creativity goes beyond a box. And inside the box, you simply say, "Okay, I'm scared and I'm threatened, and I'm gonna do whatever I can to save money." But it actually takes getting outside of that box and figuring out how to make money. We gotta break even. We gotta do something. And I think everybody's suggestion is worth pursuing and take it to the next level. So our current interim city administrator, I think, is excited to work with everybody to figure out how to make this happen. I think ultimately, that's what we need to make happen. So, yeah, you all rock totally. Thank you very, very much.
I wanna thank everybody for coming out today. You don't have to leave. You can stay for the rest of the evening if you'd like. Okay, moving on to item number five, business on the floor. Any person may ask the council at this time about any subject on the agenda or not on the agenda within the jurisdiction of the city council. However, comments on items on the agenda may be reserved until the item is discussed. And any matter not on the agenda that requires action will be referred to staff for report and action at a subsequent meeting. Presentation is left in just five minutes. Our meeting person having business. Seeing none, I'm moving on to the consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine by the city council. There will be no separate discussion on these items. Any member of the public or the city council may request removal of an item from the consent calendar to be considered separately. Looking for a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor? Moving on to item number seven. Item number seven is a public hearing, which I am opening up at five o'clock here.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council members. Okay, before you, we have ordinance number twenty dash nine point six of the city of Susanville, California, which would amend penalty provisions and add notice of violation and certificate of compliance provisions to chapter sixteen of the city municipal code. I'm Kelly Montroy, the city planner, and it needed I have Dan Gibbs as our city engineer to answer questions as the, and all get ready to the summary of why we're here today on this item. The city of Susanville is currently in need of adopting a certificate of compliance and/or COC ordinance, application process and fees. A certificate of compliance is a document issued by the city engineer with concurrence by the city planner that it is suitable for recreation with the Laxton County Sheriff's Office stating without, lit or without conditions, that a certain lot or lots described there and complies with the provisions of chapter sixteen of the city code. Additionally, a certificate of compliance is reviewed to ensure compliance with the intent of the subdivision map act, also known as FMA, and that the parcels submitted are lawfully existing lot or lots, given the error of flexibility for lot creation as defined on the subdivision map act, or as determined at the time of creation of the parcel or parcels in question. Any person owning real property within the city of Susanville may request a determination of whether such a real property complies with the provisions of this title in the subdivision map act. Currently, at this time, property owners in Susan, in the city of Susanville lack the ability to obtain a certificate of compliance as it pertains to the creation of real property with the subdivision map act, which was enacted on March fourth of nineteen seventy-two. The Laxton County Surveyors Office has provided services where needed in the past. However, recent applications found within the city have generated the need for the city to adopt a similar process. So in short, basically, you'd never have a process in place for this. By adopting the above-mentioned ordinance, the city of Susanville will be allowed to facilitate property owner requests regarding certificates of compliance. Without an ordinance in place to accommodate these types of needs to property owners, there remains a disservice to committee members and their rights as property owners under the state's subdivision map act as adopted in section six, six, four, one, zero of the following government code section. And I will, I will not get into that code section at this time. What I will ask for is that the council entertain waiting the reading, the first reading of the ordinance, and entertain bringing it back for potential adoption on June seventeen. And I will answer any questions that you have. I know this is very new to a lot of you, and due to the fact that we don't have a process in place, I expect there to be some questions.
Counsel? I, you explained it quite well. So thank you for doing that. Does the public have any questions regarding the side? No? Okay. I'm going to close the hearing then at five oh three, and counsel, I'm looking for a motion.
Second.
All in favor? No she cares.
Thank you.
Item number eight is, council, items announced. I agree. Okay, we'll do the non-manage two. Okay, we'll do the non-managed two. Item number nine A, which is vendor, our vendor, we're going to receive and file our vendor and payer warrants. Just looking for a motion to receive and file.
Motion received and filed, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries. I didn't, I saw, I didn't see Jackson's name.
Jackson?
Oh, no. Item 9B is consider purchase of hanger number 20, and that is Kevin Jones, interim city administrator.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, which have here is obviously part of the agreement of the city of Susanville, and the owner of the hanger at Susanville Municipal Court, city has first right of refusal. In this case, the owner of hanger number 20 contacted staff, said he understood the city pass protocol. He apparently didn't recall it, but he had already sold the hanger December 30th, 19, the agreements attached. So essentially, we have a couple options here. One is either accept what occurred, or we would have to put this over, talk to our attorney regarding litigation if there was some type of breach of contract, and then I'll turn it over to the switlock for any other.
So we had a first rate to review, but we haven't reviewed. Right?
Yes, ma'am.
Got it. Counsel, any questions?
Yes. I would just be curious, what the return on investment would be if we did have the opportunity to purchase it?
Well, so that question would probably be answered if we chose to locate some type of breach of contract or agreement. We had not, so although I told you this last council meeting, that we would bring forward photos, conditions, things like that. I did not bring forward in this case due to the fact that if we were going to consider it, then we probably need to consider whether or not they've reached some type of agreement or we did that.
I said let it go. We're going to have more. There's always hangers for sale.
Counsel? Okay, you have direction?
I believe we'll need a vote.
Oh, it says direction, sorry.
My vote.
That's okay. Motion, I'm looking for a motion. To what? We have to consider purchase of hanger, but what do you want to tie along the?
It would be motion to not consider the purchase of the hanger.
Okay. I'm looking for a motion to not consider.
Motion, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries. Item 9C, this is ordinance number 20 dash 1027, and Kevin Jones, interim city administrator.
So these, this is on recommendation of Ms. Long or council. During the May 27 special meeting, council was provided training on the Brown Act of Governance. At that time, council requested that we modify the code regarding multiple motions and adopt Rosenberg's rules as follows. And so you can see the modification to the municipal code, you can see the modification to the motions and the rules order, and what I can do real quick is ask Ms. Long if she has anything to add or miss, Ms. Long?
Thank you. This is just for me, what you were doing in conformity with your code. It does clarify and clean it up, and it's based on your request at that special meeting. And you can train up those perks and you are following it, and so it gives you appropriate rules of order to be governed under. So this is just getting at your code.
Thank you.
So the actual request would be motion to wait first reading, enter, and introduce ordinance number 20 dash 1027, amending section 2.04.140 on section 2.04.150 of the Susanville municipal code.
So vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to 9D.
9D will be a continuation, full session, public employment and approved personnel list. The first would be a motion and vote on amending the job position of assistant to the city administrator from a range 148 to a range 143.
Okay, counsel, any questions, public? Questions, comments? Okay, I'm looking for a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
Right.
Motion carries.
The second will be a consideration and vote to approve the amendment to the city clerk in the increase for being the executive officer or the HLBR duties.
Counsel, do you have any questions on that? Do you want a motion on each of these?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Got a second?
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries.
A vote, act, vote and action to authorize the position of full manager position to full-time.
Okay, thank you. The counsel. Questions, public? Looking for any motion?
Motion.
Got a second?
Second.
All in favor? Opposed?
And I left out that all those will be included on the approved positions, so that will hold. And then the other items out there was direction to staff. That's all on 9D.
Yeah, do you have direction, if you're going to go there?
Yes.
Okay. We're moving on to item 12A. 12A is consider resolution number 20 dash 5773, Kelly Montoya, our assistant.
Thank you. This is related to the item I presented on earlier. This basically establishes the fee schedule for said certificate of compliance process, the application fee, the fees that may come up from the city engineer doing his review of the maps and whatnot. So consider resolution number 20 dash 5773 of the city council, the city of Susanville amending resolution number 195634 to add schedules fees for obtaining a certificate of compliance. Now, unlike the ordinance, if the council chooses, they can actually approve this resolution today. It doesn't have to necessarily wait until the second reading of the ordinance on the 17. So if it pleases the council, I'd like to wait for a reading on the staff report and give it back to you for questions.
All right. Counsel? Good? Okay, I'm looking for a motion to adopt.
Motion to approve, number 205773, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to item four, my man.
13.
This is the Redflex proposal, and it's Kevin Jones, city administrator.
So this is something that Mr. Wilson began probably a year ago. Redflex is a company essentially very, they're red light, dictate company, I guess is the best definition I can give. They are, they provide this proposal. The reason you're getting it in this format, not in a formal, formal presentation frankly, is after Mr. Gibbs and I chatted a little bit about it, there's a lot of work involved in bringing this to the council, if this was going to be an action item. And so basically what we like to do is get some direction, or at least a feel from the council, we're going to end up with some more hours with this. So as you can go through this report, and if you want to just go ahead and flip through the page, what you're going to see is the time of day, you're essentially going to see the violations that they collected over a 12-hour period, and in some areas, less than others, right there? Yes. So they did a snapshot, and there's a lot of violations. I would say most are the right turns. And so essentially what happens is we would, if we chose to, we would select intersections within the city of Susanville that we wanted to place these at. We would, there's a process in which the camera will capture at a couple different angles. If someone violated strictly the red light, no other violations, no speed or anything like that. It captures it, it basically captures a photo of, it'll have the front rear to try and capture a license plate. If it does, then it gets kicked to the police department, we do what's called a cal photo on the registered owner, and, or if we can just ID the driver. Couple different things happen. If you can't ID the driver, the registered owner gets a notice saying, hey, someone driving your car, violated a lot, don't do it again, or don't borrow, don't let people borrow it. This is really, as you can see, there's a lot of violations. However, if this was something that we put into effect, there's obviously a cost associated with this. And so the one thing that we, I think Dan and I are pretty much sure, I don't want to, we don't want to talk about any revenues because the revenues on these would fluctuate, and that would not be the reason we would, you know, ask you to consider this. The reason would be forsaken and solely safe. There is a cost associated with it. We're not ready, we're not Chico, we don't have an incredible constant flow of traffic. There's an annual cost. It is, uh, there is, it is pretty labor intensive once they send you the information. So a person basically, the police department is designated to pull up the registration information, do the cal photo, make an identification, they essentially sign a box, send a camera ID with ticket. So this, it gets all, you know, it's all states and Arizona, Phoenix, I believe. And, you know, someone gets a ticket in the mail. They're held up by law, okay? There's certain ways in which you can fight them. Typically, what they suggest is you, you know, you send them the video before they fight it, and that way they go, oh yeah, I guess I did. The numbers again, that you see here will not be the true numbers. When I say that is because if it's something that we eventually did, there would be an educational campaign, there would be a 30-day window where it would just be cautionary notices, and then it would go into effect. So those numbers are going to, are definitely going to reduce drastically. Before I hand it over to Mr. Gibbs, I mean, on a safety platform, you can't argue with it. On a PR platform, on a community partnership platform, it's probably not the best idea. And it's not, not to say that, you know, we don't want to pick people off or run their advice, but, you know, as we've heard from Caltrans before, the things that they do are based on what we call the Switzer statewide integrated traffic recordings and preferences. And it's on accidents, and I'm not going to say, you know, I'm not going to say we don't have a lot, or you know, or very few accidents, we have some, but they're not incredible. And so obviously, the, the safety impact would be good. There is an added cost. The question is down the road, after we probably would get a pretty good handle, would we see a benefit, or would it cost the city money in the long run? Not as far as revenue, but would it cost us money in the long run by the time we look at our labor and what we do take in forever? So having said that, I'm going to hand over to Mr. Gibbs and give you the other side of story.
Thank you, Mr. Gibbs. I just wanted to say I had died in the group, because there are, there are definitely benefits to implementing this kind of system, increase traffic laws, and we could only have somebody to count through, and unfortunately, increase accident rates. And you've had prior experience with this kind of system in the past, it's been negative in the sense that it's, it's a lot of money into the infrastructure, and what we've been having is everybody works, world members are at, and it's not violent, it's a good thing. And the second thing is if there's some kind of legal action taken against the city, pursuit of community people, like their rights today, and first, probably through the camera, get a picture of. I did reach out to both Caltrans and Reading, and also the city of Reading. Caltrans has a similar position as you ride, it's a system, the gentleman I spoke with who's in control of their, there is a red light system in place for the city of Reading. But I want to just give you the, you get most of our events for obviously on the state highway, and I want to get a sense of the state with the position is. So one of the things that really impressed upon me more was that he said it was absolutely not a good decision for taking on right turn violation. This system was really designed for T-bow accidents on all intersections, for people to fly on the red line, and there's a broadside. We don't have a lot of those. We have, unfortunately, a simple, they are rare, they don't meet the threshold, we typically consider it as a safety concern for agency. The city of Reading, however, he was very involved in the system, they loved it, they saw an indefinite decrease in their violations. However, that was strictly for the broadside and T-bow type accidents, not for right turns. For that, again, there's a lot of incident rates there at the Ash and Main Street intersection where the negative community that's in college or, I'm not to the rate area, that's something that is, has shown a lot of indication of accident rates directly correlating with that movement. The other thing that I, that the council should consider is that we're in the middle of a change in flow patterns for traffic on the skyline, so I think that that movement in the sky, in the Ash, it's probably going to decrease, a lot of those people coming to the red town, and so I think there's violations, there's damage, there's extrapolating, it's not an actual investment, what could happen in the past, that's probably what we need to finish considering. So if people are going to come into the red town, and, you know, jump on the skyline, so they're coming to the red town, and the Ash, it's not going to be a situation that will be, so by recommendation, the council, from a purely traffic area and public safety, which I would be, not taken under consideration.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, any questions?
I do have one question, this makes sense to you. On the right turn violations, does that mean that California stops?
They set a minimum speed, I believe it's five miles an hour.
Oh, okay, so they're not, okay.
Correct.
I wasn't sure if that was, because I did write on the screen.
Same question we had.
Yeah, okay. That's another question. Thank you.
How much are we looking at?
I believe what we, the intersection we were looking at was around 20,000.
Between 20,000, probably closer to 30,000. So it's about, well, it's difficult, I gotta get hard numbers out of this, it was anywhere from $8,000 per intersection. And I don't think we have a good number to really share right now, but I would say it's closer to 30,000.
And the difference, maybe you can check here, but the difference between us and of course Reading is that they have mostly in their cities, not on the state route. They do have on the state routes, like 273, but, so it'll, it'll be a lengthy process working with Caltrans, but, so again, I just want to reiterate, if it's something that you think you want somewhere digging, we can, and we can bring it back probably in a couple of weeks from now with, with better costs, if that's what you want here, Mr. Gibbs.
Well, you said it's pretty labor intensive to begin with, and that's going to need a lot of manpower, and, you know, I don't know if it's worth that enough, to be honest with me.
My, my concern would be that, not really concern, the choice of completion, would be that we wait like 10 years until Susanville grows, like you say, until we can, if you drive to Reading, I mean, people will hit me all the time because they're crazy drivers, they don't really have that here, it's a lot more slow days. Even in Alvinor, I have people trying to pass me because they push the one road, Susanville's pretty open. I'd say give it some time and take this for now and come back and, and, like, we'll do it.
Hey, do you know when we're going to get a traffic survey on Main Street? No?
We were told two months ago and a couple months, so I'm worried to win with Caltrans. And my opinion was that on Friday, so I will be ready, and to trail up what Councilman Ferrer said, I mean, from my standpoint, if, if we see a surge, if we start seeing, you know, some, some accidents and, you know, primary collision factors, I mean, the lights and, or at least running lights, that I think is something we should consider, but we're not seeing that incredible influence right now. So, yeah, I, I agree with you on that, but it'd be nice to build on radar.
Hey, can I ask you, Thomas, I know, can we run radar on side streets that have the surveys on?
Yes, and we can run some where they don't have to have surveys. So if they call back residential district, school zone, which are out right now, but we're still, we still need to get some updates. I know that we, we were getting a list, or we got a list, some we do, some we don't because, I don't know if you remember, but some we don't want to survey because when you find out what the average or the mean is, it doesn't work out for you, you'd rather keep it maybe at 30 or something, rather than go up to 35, but we're working through those.
And I know you guys did a bunch of them, like a year or so, I think.
We do, and we got to the temperature.
We do, and we got to the temperature comment. So what was disconcerting was that a lot of the surveys, like we get Skyline, Richmond, Riverside, you know, are, I guess the annual local code that I require to work in there, it would be a local code, um, requires that we basically center speed on the 80% percent time, you know, plus there's some unusual conditions right around 5 miles an hour. And that is, it's required, but I stand that as a engineer, so that is basically, you're basically stating it's not subject to the working within the confines of the requisite tent. Probably is like, uh, Richmond, we'd be looking at 35 mile an hour speed on Skyline, I'd be looking at 45. You know, right now, that's around 75, I think, just to be clear. And I certainly wasn't comfortable bringing that kind of proposal, you know, to the council for consideration. There are, um, I do have, I have an engagement with the transportation mission and such other staff, and they are providing this, not specifically to assist us, to support the, you know, with some of these speed studies that city could get more rest of what we're looking for, for any judge. So we hope to, to bring a little more of that to the council group.
That'd be great. I love to see Main Street, you can tell.
I do.
Thank you. Thanks, guys.
Councilmember report, do you have any questions? Thomas? Okay. I think I see Thomas' horn, your voice.
No.
I'm just kidding.
Are you kidding?
But, but I do, I, I do, I do find it interesting that, um, the weather going main is very popular for right turn violations, right, that, and, and so, it's interesting, I mean, it's good stuff, but you're right, it's, uh, I agree with what you're doing. So I think you received your direction.
Good man.
Public have anything to say or ask about that, no?
Yeah, I do. Cross the eight. How you doing? Um, so the cost of this thing is roughly $25,000, $30,000, and then, uh, Chief, Chief, you going, how do we deploy, uh, a new, a new traffic car?
Well, it's, I mean, average cost roughly around $8 or $10.
Okay, and then we're also talking about the golf course, about $60,000. And I got delayed watering, we're missing, so we got $30,000, we go for high number, that we can go towards something more, uh, productive to the city, it's like watering, golf course, or, and I, I am an advocate, have more, uh, police officers physically than I would be having a machine that's going to make a state time, time again. While we're having this conversation, I found five ways to beat that city. So now we're going to be spending double the money in litigation, which city doesn't always have to spend with guys like me, who are making that right turn at 6 miles an hour and they, if they're going to be in an all wrong, time, so the gate, we're going to spend double, triple the money, which they didn't have to, twice, you know, so... But it's just my comment, it's something that I'll be...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
That's a good, that's a good observation.
Okay.
My car's in there.
Okay. Okay, moving on to item here, TP. It is the COVID report from Chief Moore. We haven't heard from you all, Dave.
No, it's been, uh, it's been quiet over here.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, COVID, we, we continue to trudge along with the theme, um, if you haven't been on Lassie Care lately, I can tell you today the numbers are holding at those same five positives. Uh, 153 is counted, 153 pending, and have came from that push, but the mass testing. So there's 1,083 negatives, one positive, serology, that's antibody, we've talked, that's been there for a long time, and then 12 calls to the call center. The team, the health department team was out there, was, uh, testing on Monday at the Lassie County Health Department. Today, it was Monday or today, we were approved for the new test, which doesn't tickle your brain stem, but it simply, uh, tickles your disportionment of the, uh, it can be done by the person themselves under, um, supervision of a medical person. So essentially today, they, or yesterday, they were in Doyle, today Big Valley, tomorrow we were in another outreach, uh, Eagle Lake and, so we had South County, North County, we're in the west with, um, they are simply helping people take their own tests now. They, they still put them in the vial and then we collect them and send them to the lab, and it's not as invasive as, uh, the, the other tests. So that's good news, a lot of people were a little worrisome about the, cute tip was like that. Um, I know I was, I didn't take it yet, but we're doing well. The, uh, the discussion at the meeting today, we did go to, back to two meetings a week because we had the positives last week. Um, we got, uh, we were, uh, beat up a little on retracting last week, as you probably all well heard, but, um, there were phone calls made from the state health director and the national health director. We were the only county in the nation that actually did what we said we would do. If you had X amount cases, we will go backwards, and we did so. Um, what that means, it means a pat on the back, you did what you said you would do. We, uh, we don't look to do that unless it gets really bad again. Um, the, moving forward, we are hoping to now work with, we, we continue to have questions, we had questions today and at this opening and that opening. And because we've been trained to look at the state's guidance, everybody's looking at the state guidance for whatever type of a business you are, uh, what we have to remember is Lassie County did a letter of protestation, we followed all the rules, we followed all their regulations, all their guidelines, all their recommendations. And so we are, we're not exempt, but we have a variance. So we can, uh, the health department can assess each side, each plan at a case-by-case basis, and if this is long ago, the health's social services director and the health officer, Dr. Corver, approved that plan, that may move forward, even if it's in conflict with the state's plan. This does not mean you will get a thousand-person church over the next week. I doubt those two folks are going to go for that, but that gives them room now to work with, we had, the, the question came up, tournaments at the golf course. We're going to, my recommendation would be we fire them a plan, here's how we, how that looks. Um, the, with the, um, the discussion I had was they're going to try to get things moving forward. The doctors approved fire camps to be at this, uh, county fairgrounds already. So he's very willing, they're very willing, but there has to be a plan. We have to, these places have to submit, here's what we plan to do, here's how we plan to act, and, and they're going to do what they can. So that's positive. We're, we're hopeful that we can just get this thing going back to where, where, where happy community and, and, uh, you know, doing what we do. That being said, that, that's really where we're at. We continue to manage the cases, take tests, and, uh, make those contacts on those five positives. And then as you see those items growing in a week, that's good, that's really good, that means we wrapped it and people are isolated that may have affected others. So, and COVID's moving in a positive direction, if, if I could say that. Um, our community's moving in a positive direction under the direction of the county. So with that, is there any questions?
No, thanks for all you do on that.
You're welcome.
Okay, public, do you have any questions on that?
Just on the serology test. Yes, sir, yeah. Um, do we have any idea how, do they give tracing on that? How long ago estimated the person, uh, had COVID and they came up with the antibody?
Um, they can't. The test itself doesn't trace time.
Okay.
So, but that, through an interview with the individual, uh, you know, that particular case probably was, uh, illness in January and traveled to the east coast in, say, uh, November, December, or something to that matter. But yeah, it could be positive today, serology.
Okay.
But it does not take traffic time.
Dang it, yeah. Thank you. And my only choice, my only reason why I ask a question is my family was spearheaded, tested for flu, A, B, and, and, you know, everything we could get tested for, couldn't find out what the issue was, and we all think today we had COVID back in December and November, passed around to my family, we felt like it was twice, me included. Are those serology tests available to the public?
Yes, uh, well, currently if it's of interest to you, I think they're down to $40, and I, we're told that insurance pays for that now. And we are hoping in the next month or so they'll be available for the public.
Because it could go towards youth, for immunity.
It'll, it'll be going towards studies, but currently I think there's a $40 out-of-pocket. It is not provided unless you go to have a procedure done at the hospital or something, which they'll bill your insurance anyway for it. Uh, it's not provided for free of charge in the public.
Okay, thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to item 13C, which is a discussion regarding homeless, and that is Kevin Jones in terms of city administration.
So this is something that's ongoing that we, uh, council wants to see every, uh, every meeting, and so, uh, after, uh, talking to this long, a little bit more, first thing I want to address is the ordinance. And so, you know, one time we talked about camp ground, uh, we talked about identifying the areas where camping is prohibited, and her, her direction to me is that that's what we should focus on in the ordinance, is strictly prohibition of where people cannot camp. So that's what I'm going to bring to you at the next council meeting. The other thing is that we basically need direction on, I need direction on, is camp ground. Do we want to try and work on that? My recommendation would be no, but it is ultimately the council's direction, and I know that this is something we've kind of talked about, talked about, so kind of at the point where we need to, uh, you know, tell me what to do.
Counsel?
Is the, uh, so I know we, we discuss this almost every week, every two weeks, how, so the patch of land that we're looking to get going, um, that would be separate from the camp ground, correct?
So the patch of land that, that was identified through this discussion, there was no, there was no vote, there was no consensus, was the, the one that Mr., uh, Mr. Nick and I brought was, there's a patch, uh, off Spring Ridge, that was the only true viable property, city property, if the council chose to go forward with establishing some type of camp ground.
Okay, so just me generally speaking, I don't want to speak for the council, but I would prefer to move forward on that because, um, you know, I know that since we have not been doing the river cleanups, you know, I've been down there, and it's not as bad as it was, but it's still an issue, especially near the Little League field. Um, that's my main concern as to our, our children. Um, and so I would prefer to move forward on that property, and at least you come back to us and say, hey, this is where we're at, just to explore that.
You may.
I'd like the same thing with Thomas, but I've had some good conversations with Kevin And ultimately, you know, the same, same sort of thing, I want to see something, not, I don't want to wait for the ultimate cure, I just want something for me now that helps people, keeps the river clean, camp site, clearing, raving vegetation in the hole, more litter pickups. However the city can be involved, it doesn't involve waiting, and I think you've got some pretty good ideas, whatever it takes to get you, or empower you to do them.
Okay, so what, what I'll do is I will bring that back as an action item before we put any more work into it. Uh, also as part of that, or as another item, I'll bring back, and I know I gave preliminary costs on, on trash cans, but I do think that that is something, it's not free, what we can do now, uh, you know, try and find the money to do it, but put some more trash cans along the river trail. Uh, the last thing that, that I would suggest, and I know we spoke about this once before, is until we get the shrubs, the shrubbery, the weeds down, we're going to continue to have campers. I think the most impactful conversation I had was with, uh, Captain over at PD, it said, when we knock down all of our, they were, there's a longer creek for us than , uh, no water, but when we knock down our weeds and our shrubbery, our, our camps went nowhere because people like privacy. And I'm not suggesting, you know, we burn it all, but, um, but I, well, I didn't want to say, you know, that, that, the bird will be on, be on James, but, you know, I think we have to really look at that. So I'll probably bring some options back, and one would include a cost, you know, if we wait and, you know, for, and I'm not saying if we receive, yeah, but if they took, uh, I don't know, a six, eight person crew down there and they were to try and clear, just on the city side, I would assume that's a four-week project, I think. Yeah, so with the one group, four weeks, it's easy.
And we still have the permit that allows to go in and do something.
Right.
For waiting on that permit.
So, but I'll bring that back, we'll, we'll divvy that out on some options, but I will definitely bring the campground idea back as an action item. Okay?
Okay, you have any?
Uh, I, I had, uh, two notes, and then, uh, one thing, I'd be willing to come down and help, uh, get rid of, kind of, quickly as well, and maybe give, uh, to the next volunteer, uh, river plan, we could slowly focus on that, maybe a little bit quicker, just an idea. Um, and I would prefer for, uh, to go back on the agenda, or to go on the agenda in the first place, is, is the, uh, the increase in the, uh, littering, uh, disabledness, um, uh, to one, $2,000, what we spoke about, uh, recently, I would prefer for that to be back on the agenda, I think.
I, I, and again, I'll bring that back as a, as an action item for, I'm not going to bring it back as a proposal, but I will bring it back for the council to vote on whether or not to pursue it. And then if the council doesn't pursue it, we'll put one together, okay?
Okay, and that's, that's it, thank you very much.
So, so there's no misunderstanding. Um, do, do you need two councilmembers, uh, to agree to have it on the next one?
I do.
Okay.
So I think I have that on.
Got it.
On the campground, yes.
Okay, but on the littering, raising the fine?
Correct. On the littering, establishing immunity.
Okay. Is there anybody else that would be interested in having that on the agenda?
Absolutely.
Okay, we have Stafford, we have Marra.
You, thank you, a couple of things to, you know, consider with this situation here on the river, there's so many different, so many different things taking place. And everybody probably knows John Leica, he said the other day, it's some, some fun conversation down in the community garden, there's talk of, uh, future shelter and there's talk of future solutions. And then he said, but at the end of the day, when you're in my world, it's, uh, it's talk of life or death. And I don't know to what extent that means, but it's a different situation to everybody, whether we're in the, on the side where we want to help people, or whether we're on the side where we, we want to clean the river. At the end of the day, habitat restoration, cleanliness, whether we remove the shrubs, which I think is a good idea, and we did our improvement, that's more than the areas where we clean that up. We don't see tents in those areas, so that I would consider success. The litter in the river is a huge problem, and if we even want to consider economic development for the golf course and any other costs, and we invite people to come look at the litter in our river, that may be the first place they don't want to be. So either way, Kevin, I appreciate the conversations we've had, and I appreciate something, you know, something, something for me now, maybe not exactly free, low cost, something, so thank you.
So, so just to be clear, you will bring back the cost of burning the weeds, uh, willows, whatever it is?
I'm, I'm gonna, I'll work with James on bringing back the cost of probably cutting them down.
Okay.
Not specifically by fire park, but, and then of course the legalities that, that I know James will, will verse, a lot better verse there than I. So we'll bring back, you know, what we can. I know I, I assigned, or Sergeant, I'm sorry, Captain Cochran, um, should have, if he hasn't already, I know that he was reaching out to Fish and Wildlife, I'm gonna, you know, have him extend. Hopefully an invitation can end up coming here. Uh, we've done that. We've done that in the past, and we haven't had any, but, um, but we'll continue to pursue. Because they have the most heat when it comes to the water, so.
Fair. So, so if we had to, if we, we can't debate anything that, if we had to burn it down, could we? Can we just go and burn it?
There's a, a portion of it, I can continue to reduce the fuels and, that we have a permit for to maintain.
Okay.
The problem is it's not all of the active areas that we need to thin, if you will. This, this is a treatment we did five years ago, and it worked. We, we, we've known that, it worked then. Um, we have to maintain it though, and that takes time for, for these treatments. Burning's just a quicker way to achieve that than getting it burned. Because we did burn that all in one day for five weeks of hard labor.
Most part of that's county in here too, right?
There is a portion of county on the city side, yes, uh, in a couple places. Uh, it's, it's county, it's actually privately owned in the county. If you want to get technical, it's no, it's no problem.
Specifically the area where we're getting the most complaints, where people want to camp, but.
So, so that's owned by a private citizen? So they get trespassing?
Talking about by the substation. Uh, talking about by the substation and about halfway down on the right, it sweeps out that. The river has moved and let that, so that's owned, yes, by a private owner, Mr. Hope. He, or his corporate company, or I'm not sure. Um, yes.
The, the problem is, is that, uh, this will tail into, uh, probably ending on this topic, is that the county has refused, well, I'm not gonna say, when we, when our officers tell the dispatch center that these camps in particular, and when we get, we get calls on them, I'm not gonna say daily, but at least every other day, they're not responding. So that will tail into, uh, I know Mayor got an email and Marty got an email. The county is wishing to sit down and have a mutual discussion. Um, I don't know why, but they're, uh, they're concerned about some things that we do, specifically the police department. And so one of them is their response, or lack of response to the, you know, camping issues or the calls for service. And so I know that we'll, we'll probably, uh, set that up in the next week or week or two. Um, but, but it's, it is a problem because, you know, people are getting irritated by it, but we don't have, we don't have the authority there. So.
Public, do you have any questions on that? No?
Oh, I do, I can't help it. Russ?
Come on, Russ.
So, it's expected to remove those shrubs from the areas that, uh, Mr. Moore can't, you know, doesn't have a permit in right now. I know that there, we have a large road company that is a family-owned business that would be more than, I don't know, they're pretty open, that Perry Thompson had a open door policy. You guys can approach Hat Creek construction and maybe waive some building permit costs, maybe some inspection costs to get him to use a lot of his equipment and resources to help remove brush across the street, uh, on the Ballview side of the city area, right there on the city line. Just a thought, I just want to throw outside the box thing to, uh, to the council, to the staff.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You know? Okay, we're gonna move on to 13D. This is a discussion on tourism tax rate, and it is Kevin.
So back in oh-four, the city increased the TOT from eight to ten percent. Uh, and this essentially is just discussion, if you want us to pursue, uh, increasing it to twelve percent. If the council did want to entertain that, we would bring it back, but it's something that would have to go on the election, or that would have to go on the ballot. So I know we're talking about economic issues, revenue issues, and Margaret, I, let me correct me over, Margaret, uh, you said that we can go up to twelve percent, is that what you said?
If, no, you can go higher than that. I was, it's typically our elected day, you can increase over, over two percent though. So that, that would be our recommendation from that council's perspective. Uh, I do want to make sure that, that council's aware that we do have a deadline if you want to go to the November election. It does need to be decided and to the election official by, by early August. It should be something that's decided in June to make sure everything is done correctly. Okay, or early July.
Any questions for us long?
If we do say yes on this one, does that hurt the possibility of any other measures going on the ballot?
What, uh, Margaret's question was?
Question?
Is if the council chooses to, would that affect any other measures if they were to try a different measure on the November ballot?
No, it would be separate measures. Again, from a recommendation standpoint, it's not recommended to have too many measures on there that compete with each other for votes. But that's, you know, that's a decision of council, how this would be independent. It can be removed from the election, but there is a deadline to do that. So it's my recommendation, if you, if you put it on the ballot, you expect it to be on the ballot.
So I have a question. How much does it cost to put something on the ballot?
Is that a question, uh, Gwen, is that something you can answer? Or Debbie can answer, or Margaret can answer?
I don't think that's known at the time, because typically what county does, they determine how many measures they have, and then they, they divide the cost of the election between the entities that are, are putting forward items. Uh, so this is a general election, so it's likely to be a lot less than it would be at any other election. Uh, but what we can do is ask the county clerk for a, uh, estimate of, of the cost.
Okay, thank you, Margaret. Counselor?
I don't know what the cost is prior to the November ballot. You know, we're gonna pay, it's about fifteen to twenty thousand a day.
It's not that much.
It's not that much?
No. When, when is a, an election with council members on there? Then it has been expensive, not something like this. Okay.
I'd prefer to see it come back and see the council.
Would you want to price, uh, you know, for the cost and put it on the ballot?
Uh, yeah. So what I would do in the interest of time is I, I can prepare a resolution to increase it, and it'll attach the cost, you can decide, and when you see it, do we want to rule it or not? That way we at least save the meeting, so we bring it back to cost and come back with a resolution. So we'll bring back, uh, the cost and a resolution, um, at the June seventeen meeting.
Thank you. Public, Mr. Bates, would you like to say about this?
You guys are doing a great job, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. We're gonna move on to council items. Are there any council items? Okay.
I just like, uh, I have a lot of other questions, I'll just, uh, a box that updated. Boxed up, they've got you. Yep.
Anyone else?
So I do have one question. I've had a question. All of our agendas, uh, on the last meeting, it says our next meeting will be six P M. And every single week it's at three. Is, is our next meeting gonna be six P M?
No, no, uh, we'll make sure to make that correction. But there has been discussion, and I'll bring back the next meeting, uh, when we are done with this and we, when we end up landing back to our home base, uh, is the, well, I'm gonna bring something back for the time, so that's not, anyways.
Very awesome, yeah, I just had some feedbacks.
Awesome, thank you.
I'm ready to go home.
You're not going?
You're closing.
No, 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 I'm in, I'm ready to go back to council chambers.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Yes, I do have a council item. And that is, I was wondering about vandalism around town at this great meeting. Does that fall under a California vandalism law? Do we have a municipal code? What happens with that?
That'd be, that'd be something I can bring back to you, unless you want to reopen, and I don't know that, what the record did. Unless you wanted to reopen item eight, council discussion. So this is strictly about future council items, so if you want to report on that.
Well, I thought it was gonna be future council, I'm sorry. I, I want, I wanted a future council item on it, so that we could get information on it.
You bet.
Okay, do I have a second council member who'd be interested in that?
No, you're mayor.
Oh, I don't want a mayor, okay. That works. All right, so we're going back into position this time. Thank you so much.